Yeah, how are you? We got an hour here. I'm like, I'm a wrestler, I'm like, this kid is not done. I'm gonna go to the next guy. But he better make sure he's done. And if it's a kid who's like, I'm like, I'm out. The best of the four white men. Two sixteen. It's like, it's like, I weigh like, something like one eighty-five. Forty-six and a half. It's about thirty-four. Thirty-two is one three man. That's a, that's a seven or seven thirty-six. Sitting in the dark.
You can move over, we have nobody. Amy's not here.
I'm all spread out right here. It's cold here too.
Did you point at something, or?
Uh huh.
Did you point at something, you mean?
No, we were talking about, I said, I feel like I'm sitting in the dark, and I said, the reason is, this light's out right now.
Well, we can turn it off.
Is it just off?
Switch.
Oh, I thought maybe it's off.
You want, you want it off?
Sure. As my eyes get older, I get...
I got it.
It's tougher for me to see. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Pliss is trying to reach you.
Okay, be right there. On the birthday.
Oh, thank you. This is the last place I've been to be on my birthday. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?
I didn't hit a golf, I didn't hit a golf ball, man. I didn't go out there and go, I didn't do anything on my birthday.
Two thirty on, up here.
It is your birthday, right?
It is.
And you're forty-seven now, right?
I'm having my, I will say how good you are, man, I'm having the thirteenth anniversary of my fortieth birthday today.
Thirteen, forty, so you're sixty-three?
Thirteenth anniversary of my fortieth birthday. Try again.
Fifty-three. Oh, fifty-three, okay. Well, I started to say for you, sixty-three. Well, I don't know what Steve was gonna say.
Yeah, you say whatever you want.
I'm there, that's my age, I'm sixty-seven. Happy birthday, I hope you have many more.
Thank you, sir. I need many, many more.
Yeah.
Sitting in the dark.
You can move over, we have nobody. Amy's not here.
I'm all spread out right here. It's cold here too.
Did you point at something, or?
Uh huh.
Did you point at something, you mean?
No, we were talking about, I said, I feel like I'm sitting in the dark, and I said, the reason is, this light's out right now.
Well, we can turn it off.
Is it just off?
Switch.
Oh, I thought maybe it's off.
You want, you want it off?
Sure. As my eyes get older, I get...
I got it.
It's tougher for me to see. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Pliss is trying to reach you.
Okay, be right there. On the birthday.
Oh, thank you. This is the last place I've ever been to be on my birthday. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?
I didn't hit a golf, I didn't hit a golf ball, man. I didn't go out there and go, I didn't do anything on my birthday.
Two thirty on, up here.
It is your birthday, right?
It is.
And you're forty-seven now, right?
I'm having my, I will say how good you are, man, I'm having the thirteenth anniversary of my fortieth birthday today.
Thirteen, forty, so you're sixty-three?
Thirteenth anniversary of my fortieth birthday. Try again.
Fifty-three. Oh, fifty-three, okay. Well, I started to say for you, sixty-three. Well, I don't know Steve, what I was gonna say.
Yeah, you say whatever you want.
I'm there, that's my age, I'm sixty-seven. Happy birthday, I hope you have many more.
Thank you, sir. I need many, many more.
Yeah.
Good evening, folks, I apologize for the delay, and we'll start with our meeting. I'd like to call this, uh, meeting of the, uh, Bunkham Board of Education, Thursday, April eleventh, twenty thirteen, session. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is, uh, have everyone rise for the, uh, full presentation of our national colors by the Inkton High School Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard. National colors are covered, carried by Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Luke Levin. Air Force colored are covered by, carried by Cadet Senior Airman Wyatt Gibson. Guards are Cadet Major Andres Geterius and Cadet Master Sergeant Tristan Carter. We ask that you join us in this presentation by respectfully standing silently, removing your hat, and placing your right hand over your heart, in honor of our nation, those who defend it, and the freedoms that we enjoy.
Freeze in, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
If you'd please remain standing and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. Uh, today, the board started at three P M. at the board work session, and we covered, uh, some policies, changes, uh, and some, uh, agenda items. Uh, at five thirty, uh, we went into, uh, closed session in the executive conference room, uh, to discuss, uh, attorney-client privileged information and, uh, personnel information. Uh, it brings us to our meeting. First thing that we need to do is to approve the agenda. I have a couple, I have a couple things to, um, add and change to the agenda before we get started. Uh, first is an add-on item dealing with the San Hill Elementary Golf Course, uh, that will be added to the consent agenda. Um, I've been asked to remove from the consent agenda the March seventh closed session meeting of minutes, and to move from the consent agenda to the action agenda, the student transfers, uh, for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, um, policy code, or, or policy forty-three oh three, uh, which deals with, um, uh, code of conduct for bus riders, and also the personnel report. Those three things will be moved, uh, to the, uh, action agenda. Uh, is there any other changes?
I did have one, I forgot to mention to you earlier, uh, the intent to continue the contract for Medicaid billing services could be also put, put that on the action agenda.
All right, I'll move that also.
And the only other change, um, is what we discussed earlier, I'd like to, to, uh, put it on this month's agenda for clarification, board directives, uh, are for discussion and possible action.
All right, um, I guess the first thing that, that we're gonna do, um, of the items that I have moved, uh, or removed, uh, do we have a, a motion to approve that as presented?
Could I ask a quick question? Do the, the, the minutes, the closed session minutes have been moved, or they are removed, and we're not, we're not dealing with them tonight?
They are removed.
Okay.
So, we will not deal with them tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the, um, alterations.
Okay. Uh, how about a motion to approve the entire agenda?
The entire agenda?
Well, we have the action items also, you left the...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the entire agenda.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, and, um, so, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Baldwin, would you like to amend something on the agenda?
Oh, as far as the board directives?
Whatever you would like to amend.
I would like to amend that board directives be read, board directives for discussion and possible action.
So you're asking to change that section to, once, one more time?
Change it from board directives to board directives for discussion and possible action.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, here in a second. Okay. All right, so then print the agendas approved, and... Dr. Baldwin?
Good evening, everyone. We were certainly pleased with the results, and we actually had, for the first time ever in Bunkham County, we had an electronic town hall that was conducted this past Monday evening, and while our efforts to communicate regarding the new STEM High School, we did have some hiccups, uh, there may be a few parents out there that were a part of the hiccups when the telephone call came in. But Mrs. Blunt was, uh, notified that we had over two thousand telephone listeners that accepted the call, and at the peak of this hour-long session, we had over eight hundred listeners, and hundreds of those stayed with us all the way through the full hour. A success rate, and I think this is, uh, when we talk about the Chicago public school system, and definitely use this quite a lot, um, we were told that, uh, we had a success rate for participation of three times that of similar sessions that are held in Chicago, so that's, that's pretty good stuff. Uh, we also addressed nineteen questions from callers, that covered a wide range of, uh, of topics, and the, uh, town hall segment actually included a survey, so, uh, we were able to get quite a bit of input from callers, uh, we'll be sharing that at a later date. In fact, we will be actually out in the community for the, uh, rest of this month. I think our first scheduled, uh, middle school appearance is gonna be at Reynolds Middle School, and that will be this Monday, and, uh, the programs will start at six thirty, run from six thirty to eight o'clock, uh, hopefully, we, we will be out before eight o'clock, um, but if you will just check with our website and find the particular district that, uh, that is of interest, and, again, we're excited about coming out and bringing STEM High School face-to-face to parents and students. A reminder to all that the annual top scholars banquet is scheduled for next Tuesday, and, uh, that's gonna be the sixteenth, it will be at the Crown Plaza, and this is, this is one of my favorite opportunities, because what we do, for those of you that, uh, have never attended, uh, we really recognize, uh, in a very special way, some of our best and brightest seniors that we have in Bunkham County schools, um, so, wanna make sure everybody has that on their calendar, and, uh, you'll be there for that banquet. I wanna encourage, uh, our public, our stakeholders, to access, we have an audio version of the recent, recent budget workshop that, uh, we did for the board, and that is now available on our district website, you'll go there, uh, you can access that, and we are currently awaiting the senate, state senate, and state house versions of the state budget. So what our particular workshop was able to focus on is what the governor's proposed budget for the next two years looks like, and in particular, what would be the impact for Bunkham County schools. Um, the primary concern that we saw coming through the governor's budget was the loss of state funds to cover, uh, second and third grade teaching assistance, uh, we estimate that loss to be about, uh, four point nine million dollars in personnel support, uh, as, as many of you know, we've, we've really emphasized the importance, K three, of, of having that full package of classroom teachers and teaching assistants, but that is, uh, that is one of four versions of the budget, and the most important one is yet to come, that's the fourth one, and that's the finalized budget, so we, we await that. Uh, we also know that we've got some real challenges next year, especially from the federal end. We lose our edge of jobs funding, uh, that's about two point seven million dollars that was, uh, provided to us, I think, three years ago, was when federal edge of jobs came in, it was low P S, I believe that's right, and, uh, that was there to give us some immediate support for classroom teaching positions, uh, that in combination with, I think, most of us have heard the term federal sequestration, well, that's gonna impact school systems, uh, specifically in our special needs, in our Title One areas, and Title Two, so it's gonna be quite challenging for us. Uh, we also talked quite a bit about the current bills that, uh, are in place in the House and the, in the Senate, nothing has yet become law, um, but we do believe that they, uh, many of those bills could potentially have quite a bit of impact, uh, not only on the budget, but on the operations of, of our school systems. It has, uh, appeared, at least for the last couple of days, that, uh, the winter season has come to a close, I hate saying that, 'cause I know it's always gonna come back, but, well, with, with, as the winter goes away, so does the concern for snow and ice, and four o'clock wake-up calls for the superintendent in the morning, so a reminder to all, especially students, that your last day is now June the fifth, and in addition, the teacher work day that was, uh, scheduled, the original calendar on April twenty-sixth, that is now a day for student attendance, and for teachers, Memorial Day, uh, has been converted from an annual lead day to an optional teacher work day, and I also want to take an opportunity, and I promise you, we'll send plenty of communications out, 'cause I know you're gonna forget all of this, uh, I'll forget all of it when I walk out. Uh, we want to also announce that we need to move our early release that was scheduled for May the seventeenth to May the thirty-first, and why do we need to do that? Because the common exams are gonna be administered throughout our school system, and our teachers and staff will need time to, uh, to score those exams on that particular afternoon, so, again, I promise you, we'll send plenty of communications and reminders that, uh, those dates have been changed. Finally, I wanna recognize the dedicated efforts of, uh, of three of our staff, Dr. Robbie Adele, uh, who is our safe school athletic, uh, director for the county, uh, Mr. David Tarson, director of student services, and Mr. Joe Huff, our transportation director, they participated along with law enforcement, firsters, fars, experts, and I see a lot of them in the room tonight, to analyze school safety across our school system, uh, this was certainly in response to the terrible tragedy in Sandy Hook. Uh, this presentation that you were here tonight, board, I, I can assure you, I've, uh, Sheriff Duncan had the opportunity to sort of have a preliminary look at that, I think you're gonna be very impressed about the dedication and the amount of time, and how much of an outreach this particular team made across the state to, uh, to bring best practices in, um, but I do wanna recognize the three, and I, and Sheriff Duncan, I, I guess I, hopefully I'll be on the Christmas card list, 'cause I, I wanna also make sure that this public understands how important that you've been in this whole process, because this was actually, um, at the direction of Sheriff Duncan, this is a process that's been used over and over, uh, very efficiently in law enforcement, and I wanna, wanna certainly personally and publicly thank you, because I know, uh, how important, uh, our school system is to you in terms of safety, uh, this, uh, this process has just been incredible, we, we've got a lot of lessons, we're, we're gonna take notes in the education business of what's, what's occurred. That concludes my conference.
All right. Ms. Blunt, do we have some employees to recognize?
Good evening, Chairman Reinhardt, Superintendent Baldwin, members of the board. Before I talk about employees or our good news, we have a tornado watch in effect, so those of you who will be driving home, be careful driving home, and what we do when that is the case in our schools, we let our school staff know and students know we are on a watch, and we tell them where to go if we go to a warning. Would you like to know where to go? Luckily, we're very close, in this building, our best option is the hallway that's just the other side of this room, so, if we go to a warning, and I'll be watching for that, I'll have you just exit quietly into this green hallway that's right out here in the center of this corridor, be comfortable, and hang out, and tell them, get out of the warning. Some excitement for the evening. Um, we do have several employees that are getting, uh, recognized this evening, Bob, if you'd like to come down here, Chairman Reinhardt. Uh, first we have Dwayne Banks, who I know is here. Mr. Banks is a T C Robertson High School teacher, and he teaches agriculture. What I don't know, Mr. Banks, is whether you've been there all ten years, or did you do something else?
No, I was at Irwin.
At Irwin?
Yes.
Also in agriculture.
Thank you.
Very good. Did Dawn Roberts slip past me? Yes, she did, there she is. Anken Middle Social Studies teacher, also ten years, and Maria here somewhere else?
Uh huh, North Bunkham High School.
North Bunkham, all right. We like to congratulate you.
Congratulations, she does.
And we do have someone in the room who's been with us for thirty years, who survived to tell the tale, and he is seated at the end of this row, Mr. Leland Blankenship. Okay, not Chris Progman. Leland is our Director of Secondary Education, he was the Director of Career Tech Ed, and we inherited Leland from Haywood County, is that correct?
Yeah, this is my second time around.
Second time around in Haywood County. Well, thank you for sticking with us. He did tell me yesterday that he was a little bit nervous about having it announced, because the vultures might be circling the wagon, or something like that.
I can't live here in this town.
Can't live here in this town. Uh, we also have an employee who is receiving an extra special recognition this evening, and I'm going to have Anna Austin come forward and sort of introduce, the introducer.
Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, it's an exciting time to be here tonight, as we recognize Candy Sellers for her hard work and dedication to Bunkham County schools. We have with us tonight several guests, we have our NCAE District Director Rena Sutton from Macon County, we have our District, uh, President Shelley Marshall also from Macon County, and then before I introduce our next person, they're all from out of town, and they'd like for me to put them up now because of the tornadoes, so... But at this time, I would like to recognize and introduce to you our NCAE Vice President Mark Jewell, who's with us from Raleigh, who will actually make the presentation for this award.
All right, uh, good evening, Bunkham County.
Good evening.
Let me bring you greetings on behalf of NCAE, and the first thing I wanna do is, uh, thank the superintendent for that excellent report on what's coming down the pike, or what we think might be coming down the pike from, uh, from the General Assembly every day is a big question mark, so that you gave an excellent report there. I also wanna thank the Chairman Reinhardt and the school board members for the hard work that they do, but let's give a big round of applause for the leadership of Anna Austin as well. She is a hallmark leader in our organization, and we look to her for so many, uh, great qualities, and she represents all of our members very well, and she, uh, the partnership that she has with Bunkham County schools is the model that we think every school district in the state, uh, need to be emulating, and it's so good to see, I know we have a lot of students here, I think it's a robotics recognition today, or, uh, so it's also great to see so many students and educators and parents here. So, now to the honoree. It is an honor and a privilege to be, uh, here on behalf of our sixty thousand members of the North Carolina Association of Educators. For over forty years, NCAE, through various awards and scholarships, has tried to make sure that outstanding educators receive recognition for being outstanding in their field of work. Now more than ever, you see, it's important to pay tribute to the outstanding public servants who make a difference every day in their school communities. Now, see, in the past, NCAE has actually held a banquet in Raleigh, prior to our convention, but this year, we decided to take the awards to the winners' home turf, and we wanted to allow them a moment in the spotlight, among their peers, and the students, and their community members. And to the educators in the audience, there has never been a career, and I think Anna, uh, emulates this as well, that's as fulfilling and as frustrating, but as wonderful, as working with students and educators. But being an educator is more than just a job, it's more than a profession to be proud of, it is a calling, and a calling to help challenge and inspire others to be the best they can possibly be. So it is an honor and a privilege for me to present the NCAE Central Office Administrator of the Year Award, this evening, to a leader in the school community who is a great role model and a lifelong learner. She began her career actually as a teacher assistant in Haywood County, and she's taught elementary school, and she's also been an elementary school principal. She's also been an active member of the NCAE, and the school improvement team cadre trainer, especially in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, and she has assisted many schools in gaining a better focus on how to empower teachers and school improvement teams. She's been a leader of the International Reading Association, as well as the Bunkham County Principal and Assistant Principal Division, and her role as Director of Elementary and Intermediate Education and Professional Development. She continues to be a learner as she has worked with teachers and administrators in the implementation, implementation of the North Carolina Essential Standards and the Common Core State Standards. And in her journey as an educator, she has always tried to see the whole picture of what can be done to impact learning and ensuring that public education remains strong. And begin, being a part of NCAE and Bunkham County has allowed her to grow and to continue to impact in the community in a positive manner, I think she needs to be standing up about now. So let us all stand. Congratulate Candy Sellers, who then has the NCAE Central Office Administrator of the Year. Do you want to check?
I'm used to it. Quite used to it.
Thank you. What an honor. I have to say, I'm very proud to be a member of NCAE. Makes me very proud to be a member of the Buncombe County NCAE. And you're only as good as the team you work with. I work with great leaders, Dr. Baldwin, Ms. Smaller, other directors in this building that deserve this just as much as I do. I've almost felt guilty because I know how hard everybody else works, and so they share this with me, I can assure you. My elementary principals that I work with, middle and high school principals that I work with as we work on our continuous improvement plans that are so near and dear to mine and Anna's heart, and to my coaches that are here. And I have several curriculum coaches that are here, and I respectfully call them my girls and a guy because I have one. And many of them are here, and they are my eyes and ears in the schools, and they get out there and do a lot of work that sometimes I'm not able to get out there and do. And I love them dearly, and I appreciate everything they do and everything that everybody in this room does to ensure the success of the students of Buncombe County Schools because that's what we're all about, is student success. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Blunt, you're up again for good news.
We have three different schools this evening who are going to have students be recognized. The first group is from Anka High School.
Yo.
The big burly ones. And we have Coach Mark Harris is going to talk about his champions here, and Robbie, I think you just listened to Dr. Adele.
Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, Board. It is an honor as a Director of Athletics for Buncombe County Schools to bring to you tonight state champions from Anka High School, as well as a state champion coach. All right? And certainly, we are so glad that Coach Harris is here. Let me tell you about these two men. Andrew Franklin wrestled at Anka for four years and was varsity in both his junior and senior year. He was a regional finalist and a state qualifier as a junior, winning 63 matches, 36 matches. For his senior year, he first had to lose to 285 pounds, going to the gym in the mornings and at night in addition to afternoon practices. After six weeks of dieting and weight loss, Andrew began an amazing season that included winning conference, regional, and a state championship. Andrew finished the season with a record of 39 and 2 with 19 pins. Wrestling, however, is Andrew's second sport. He is a two-time All-Conference lineman and was the member of the All-Western North Carolina Team in 2012. He is also a two-time All-American Vogue Combine participant and a recipient of the Marine Corps Award for Excellence in Leadership. He recently committed to play football for Campbell University and will study history and pre-law. Finally, Andrew is a great kid and a great student. His greatest accomplishment is a 4.25 weighted GPA, making him one of the top students at Anka High School. Our other young man is Casey Hutchinson. Casey is a rare four-year starter and an extremely rare four-year qualifier for the state wrestling tournament. Casey has enjoyed an incredible wrestling career. He is a three-time conference champion, a four-time regional finalist, a three-time regional champion, a three-time All-State wrestler, a two-time state champion, and a two-time High School All-American, and the most outstanding wrestler at the state champions on March 2 of 2013. Casey finished his senior year with a record of, listen to this, 58 and 0 with 27 pins. He holds the school record for most pins in one season with 39, and he is second in both career wins at 204 and career pins at 110. Casey won 90% of his high school matches, losing only 24 times in 228 bouts. Casey is an excellent student and has a GPA of 3.9. He has yet to make a final college choice as of this date, but will likely wrestle in either UNC Chapel Hill or Appalachian State University.
Our school is full of great kids. There's just two of them. Ms. Wise here, she's here doing homework for a teacher cadet class, our RTC Kids presented The Colors tonight. Sometimes our schools get attention for the wrong things, but we have a campus full of wonderful kids. These are just two of them. Since I've got two state champs, I'm going to talk about them both at the same time. First, they're great people. They're nice, and they're big. They're known on our campus and by our faculty as being genuine and great, well-mannered kids. They have gone out of their way to help younger guys, both in my program and around the school, be better people. They're both great students, they're both college-bound, and they're both on their way to being college athletes. When I emailed Dr. Adele their stats, Casey was uncommitted. He has now committed to Appalachian State. And he's a great student, he's a great candidate for all at Campbell. But the Wonder Twins has been calling here. You know, I've been blessed with a great career, and I don't know that I'll ever be able to do this again, but it's been really fun having you guys, and congrats.
Now, Casey, I think Dr. Baldwin wants to talk to you before you go about your choice of Appalachian State. And I did want to ask, did I hear correctly, you lost over 200 pounds?
Oh, no.
No, no, not Casey.
No, I lost 50.
You lost down to 285.
Down to 285.
Yeah, I was like 330.
Can I still sit at your table at the top of the class?
Ms. Blunt?
I'd also like to recognize the mothers are here. You guys have done a great job.
Yay, moms! I have two boys myself who wrestle. I sat on those bleachers from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. People talk about football games for two or three hours. Mm-mm, wrestling moms, we know. I still feel it. Onto a total shift of locale to the North Buncombe Region, and we have with us one of our two robotics teams. Dr. Michael Bowman is going to come down, and he's got students and robots and gizmos. Come on down, North Buncombe. This is the first robotics team, and they are first in our hearts, but first stands for something, and I hope they'll explain what that is. We have Show and Tell.
My name is indeed Mike Bowman. I'm the coach of the North Buncombe High School Robotics Team. This is our robot. You're going to get a very short demonstration of what a robot can do. Somehow, our robot came to be named Debbie. We are just a second-year robotics team, and we were very fortunate in our first year. We, at the regional tournament in Raleigh, was awarded the highest rookie seed team. So, in other words, for all rookie teams who competed, we finished the highest. Out of 65 teams that year, we finished 18th. Our second season here has been kind of a dream season. We managed to make it to the semifinals this year, so we finished, depending on how you look at it, around about 7th. So, I'm very proud of this group, and I'm very proud of the work that they did. But I'm the last person who should tell you about the robot. I'm going to turn it over to the team who designed and built it. Mr. Kyle Church is our Team CEO.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Church, and I'm here to explain what exactly first robotics competition is. In the preseason, the team starts to meet, write grants, gather sponsorship funds, and organize into four sub-teams, design, ops, electronics, and programming. In early January, the kickoff event occurs. The kickoff event is the first official part of the build season, and all teams come on a Saturday to view a live video cast. They are told what the game is, some basic rules, and what they can expect this season. After this, a tournament activity begins with multiple groups brainstorming on how to accomplish the task. After the quick six-week build season, we must seal the robot in the bags and no further progress can be made. We then attend the regional competition. This year, the game was like this. There were two alliances with three teams on each alliance, one red and one blue. You had an option of shooting at multiple goals, and you could shoot frisbees, and then for bonus points, you could climb a pyramid. The pyramid had three levels, and we could consistently climb to the third level, making us a great scorer for whatever team we were on and a very consistent robot. And now Julian will take you through the design process.
Hey, my name's Julian, and I'm going to briefly describe our design process. We began with some simple brainstorming. We postulated different designs for our robots such as a climber. There was a shooter which would shoot frisbees into the goal, a picker-upper that would pick up frisbees and deliver them into a net. Once we had our mindset on the climber, we first began by trying to figure out how exactly our robot was going to make it to the top of the jungle pyramid. The, there are strict laws that govern how you can make it to the top, so we had to make sure our robot fit in within regulation and can make it to the top and be past suspicion. Further designing was comprised of inventing and creating every piece that was part of the robot and making sure that all the necessary components were there. Once the design process was over and the building started, we often came across mistakes and obstacles that our robot couldn't, that the current design couldn't overcome. So, the design process is really a continuous activity as we constantly had to come up with solutions and new parts that would fix the deficient ones. And now Cedar is going to briefly describe our electronics and how they fit together.
Hello, my name is Cedar, and I'll be talking about the electronics within our robot. To communicate with the robot at competition, we use wireless router. This router leads directly to our C Rio, or what you would call a central processing unit. The C Rio leads to the power distribution board, which administers the right amount of energy to each component. The C Rio also connects directly to the digital side power module, which converts a signal to, and controls the overall, and is, am I allowed to describe the technical part?
Hello, I'm Edward Taylor, and I'll be talking to you about the different mechanical aspect of the robot. For this new robot, it costs necessary for the time. I invented PVC to reduce weight and make it much easier to climb. We've got a total of four motors, two of them being used here. The most important one on the top is the main lifting motor that pulls the robot in when the hook is attached. The arms themselves are not moved by the motors, but by the torsion springs at the joints. We would have bumpers down around the bottom perimeter during competition to protect it from damage. And I'll hand it over to Ed Wood, who's going to talk to you about control and programming.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ever Chen, and I'm the programmer and the driver of Debbie. So, the program basically divided by two parts, which is autonomous and operating. In autonomous mode, we need to program 15 seconds, which the robot will move by itself, no one control. And we will climb in the first run because we have to climb three layers of it, and we will climb to the third run with it. And in the operating mode, we will climb rest of the two. And this year, we decided to use Java programming. And when we do the programming, we have to upload our program to the onboard computer serial with a terminal. And when we practice it, we will connect the cable with it in our school or something. But when we arrive to the field on the competition, we can connect it wirelessly, which is the driving station will, is away from the robot for 10 meters away. It's a challenge, but after like six weeks' effort, we overcome it. And that's Debbie. Hand it to Allison, talk about the sponsor.
Hi, my name is Allison, and in addition to helping build the actual robot, I was in charge of all the management duties for our team, and that includes fundraising and writing grant reports to people that gave us money and team spirit. And so, our team is funded completely by non-school sources, and so we received grants and private donations. And so, this year NASA gave us $5,000, JC Penney Award us $2,000, and Best 5 $1,500. And then my fundraising efforts raised 800 more. And at this time, each team member is going to share what this experience meant to them personally. And so, as for me, my favorite part of this was being able to see what other teams at the competition did because I got a thorough understanding of what we designed and created. But it's also nice to see what other teams decided to go in for each season.
So, I have been studying Hong Kong for 15 years. I mean, I was born there. And since I come to America and joined this team, one thing I really like about it is I put my, apply my knowledge into real stuff. I really mixed up with the knowledge I learned before, no more. Before that, knowledge for me is just a textbook, it's just a test. And now, we make a robot, we program a robot, and it moves. Oh, my God. This is really, really thankful to our team teacher, Mr. Bowman. Really, really a great chance with that, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Neeman, and I was originally going to be a programmer with Ed, but he kind of took that all over by himself, and I ended up being kind of like a handyman, kind of do whatever someone needed. And what robotics really helped me with is learning how to work with other people and accomplish like a goal. It was a great experience.
I really enjoyed working with this group throughout the season and growing as a family. We seem to really grow upon each other into a community and a, I'm really looking forward to next year when I get to spend more time with these people.
During the season, I learned how, as Ed mentioned before, how to apply your knowledge into a physical robot or product or whatever. Because often in school, you learn stuff and you learn many facts and stuff, but you actually never get to apply it to anything until maybe college or once you start working. So, it was a great way to actually apply your knowledge and a great way to learn. It also taught me teamwork under pressure. We were under a lot of pressure during competition, and taught me the importance of teamwork, and it's a great skill to know.
As a two-year member and a senior, this event inclined me to pursue a degree in nuclear engineering at NC State. This event encouraged students to use science, technology, engineering, and math to solve problems. And as everyone else has said, you know, in the classroom, you don't always get to use what you've learned in a practical sense. And I think this kind of program should be supported by any school system that thinks that science, technology, engineering, and math is something useful for, you know, this generation.
What I really learned from this is a lot of practical fabrication, especially with metals, and how to really be part of an engineering team and not just doing everything as a solo unit and having to work with other people in their designs.
I want to finish by thanking the Board of Education for the opportunity to show off Debbie, and thank all of you for being willing to listen, not that you had a choice.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowman and team.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowman, and team, fantastic. We all applaud you. I love how Debbie just lifted herself, like, does she do push-ups too, or just pull-ups?
She's much more impressive on a full jungle gym.
Jan, I'd just like to mention one of the unsung heroes who's here tonight, Mr. Neil Rosenberg. He's the one who, a few years ago, started the Western Rock County Robotics Opportunities Committee. He first to Buckham County and started the competition last year that occurs at UNCA every year.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. And just staying with the same theme and just changing the geography, we have A.C. Reynolds Middle School. I have to tell a story about A.C. Reynolds Middle School while they're coming up. Come on down. This is the Dueling Randalls. Randall McGraw and Randall Hyland are the heads of this wonderful team. But I don't know whether they know this, so I'm going to tell on Valley Springs. Some of you, if you were here a couple of weeks ago, we talked about being at Valley Springs for a bright and early WLOS morning show at 4:30 in the mornings. The good thing is, we were at Valley Springs and not at A.C. Reynolds, where you would have had to get up at 4:30 a.m., but we did a segment with the robotics team there. And their teacher confessed that he was not too happy with the A.C. Reynolds team, because he apparently went over and helped you guys get a start, is that correct? And then he did better when it came to the actual competition. Yeah, that's how that went. So Dueling Randalls, why don't you come down and tell me, tell our group here what this fine group of A.C. Reynolds Middle School students have achieved.
Well, I'm pretty much overwhelmed. This was our first year at this, and we put together this team, and it's everything that you would want. It's the creativity, it's the, just the hard work, it's all the ethics that, you know, you would put into, you know, trying to be the best at something. And so my colleague and I, and all of us, you know, are very proud of them, and couldn't work without very extremely supportive administration and so on. So, and parents, you know, long hours. We had a lot of parents, you know, eight o'clock at night a couple times, that we were still there working, and custodians are saying, hey, you know. But I'd like to call up our robotics club president, and her name's Emma Whitney, and she's a seventh grade student.
Well, like Mr. McGraw said, I'm Emma Whitney. First of all, I'll introduce our seventh grade team. They are Noble Masters, Lauren Malinowski, and Jessica Meneses, and myself. This team has accomplished many great things since meeting each other. We've all worked well together and really enjoyed it. And in the end, our team was able to produce a robot that won first place in the Western Regional Vector Robotics Competition, and fifteenth place in the State Vector Robotics Qualifier Competition. Noble Masters, our driver, was also able to achieve second place in the state competition for robotic skills challenge. Secondly, I have the pleasure of introducing our eighth grade team. They are Kaylee Dutcher, Noah Meshberg, and Yerbe Satarya. This team has worked very well together from the start. When it came time, they were able to produce a robot that was able to achieve sixth place in the Western Regional Vector Robotics Competition, and second place in the State Vector Robotics Tournament. Yerbe Satarya, the eighth grade team driver, was able to score an impressive first place in the state competition for robotic skills challenge. There are two very important people I haven't given credit to yet. Mr. Randall McGraw and Mr. Randall Hyland, our advisors, made this whole thing possible. We all greatly appreciate your efforts in making this a success.
All right. Students, thank you very much for all coming. We appreciate you, and congratulations on all your accomplishments. Very good. Next on the agenda is our curriculum feature for the night. Ms. Swanger?
Good evening. Chairman Reinhardt, board members, Dr. Hollen. What a wonderful night for STEM in Buckham County Schools. As a chaperone for the middle school teams, their robots had to pick up beanbags and drop them in for points. And it was just incredible that our robot, every time it would compete, it was solid, it had the right alliances, the drivers did a perfect job, they coached each other, and it was a wonderful event, so very proud of them. As well as Dr. Bowman, who's been on our STEM High School Committee, and he brings such an insight to our group. So perfect STEM activities tonight. You all are hearing about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We have those kinds of initiatives all over Buckham County Schools. And tonight, we're going to highlight a little bit about math. We are going to share with you a presentation that we prepared for our Race to the Top Committee. We have four math coaches in elementary and middle school, and two of these are part of our Race to the Top Team. And we saw this presentation and thought that you would enjoy seeing it as well. Our math teachers, our math coaches, our principals, educators have worked very hard to integrate the new Common Core standards, the deeper levels of thinking, complex word problem solving, and good communication. So Sheila Burcher and Marta Garcia are here this evening, and they have also integrated well and partnered well with our exceptional children department, and they're going to talk about that initiative as well.
We're going to have to ask you guys to come down to the front row here, because we're going to put the projector screen down.
Well, good evening. I'll go ahead and get us started while we get the slides up. My name's Marta Garcia, and I'm one of two elementary mathematics coaches, and my colleague, Sheila.
Hi there. I'm Sheila Burcher, and I'm a middle school coach.
And we're excited just to give you a glimpse of some of the things that are happening in Buckham County mathematics, kindergarten through eighth grade. We're going to start off by showing you just some pictures to highlight the initiatives that we are supporting. Mostly are highlighted, ideas today will be about how we're supporting teacher practice and how that directly impacts student learning.
We probably need some of those middle school students to come up and fix this.
Okay, so the first thing that we would like to share with you is, K8, we have created moodles for our teachers, so that prior to us having Power School, which they'll be able to access a lot of information, the math moodle allows our teachers to access numerous resources. They can get to their curriculum perhaps, they can share different activities, they, we have links for different websites and for different articles. So this is sort of their information place, K8, so that it's user-friendly and they can go to that moodle and they can access whatever information they need. We just did it for the convenience of their teachers.
One of our exciting things that we'd like to share with you today is that we have 75 teachers, kindergarten through fifth grade, who are part of our district elementary math team. Every elementary school has a math team that's composed of teacher representatives from each grade, and then each school chooses three teachers from that team. And this district math team has had extended professional development with the math coaches for approximately four and a half years now. And they represent all elementary, intermediate schools, and then we have teachers 6'8" who represent the middle schools. They facilitate school-based math teams and district professional development, and this is an exciting piece of teachers leading teachers in professional development. This past spring, we learned that we had been asked to be part of a math and science partnership called an A+ Grant. This is a collaboration with UNC Chapel Hill and UNC Charlotte. We received over $300,000 in grant monies, and last August, we had 50 teachers, kindergarten and first grade, who were able to come and be part of a training with the Kathy Richardson assessments. And they chose our school system specifically because of the professional development and the strength in math instruction. This August, we'll have an additional 45 teachers joining the grant project, and then we'll have a third year of the grant project. And we can see here in this, we see some teachers working with students, doing individual assessments, small group assessments, and really helping facilitate math learning.
And then focusing in middle school, some of you already know this, because we presented this, had some students present this in October, but we received $75,000 from the Sisters of Mercy, and we also received $35,000 from the VELP Foundation for us to implement a program in the middle school, which is called Math Forward. And what that does is it provides technology in the form of graphing calculators that wirelessly communicate with software. And in terms of formative assessment, which is what we're really trying to focus on with our teachers, we're really trying to get them to use formative assessment, so that we can know what the students know and what they don't know quickly. We don't want to wait until it's too late. So this allows the students, they can ask any types of, any type of questions, and the students can input their responses, and automatically, it shows the students' responses through the software. So we're very fortunate for us to have that. We started initially with six different classrooms. We started at Owen Middle, Inca Middle, and Irwin Middle, and I'm happy to say that we have now expanded, since the PowerPoint, we've gone from 16 classes now to 17 classes, so just within a week. And we have this program in six of our seven middle schools. So we're very happy to have received that, and we're hoping that we're going to get some more money to expand it even further.
And that's just some pictures of students using Math Forward and the way it shows up on the computer screen.
Another initiative is we have lead teams that have been helping roll out the Common Core State Standards in mathematics. These lead teams have had sustained professional development with the math coaches, and they actually led all the professional development for all teachers in K5 for the past two years. These teams continue working on curriculum decisions and revisions, so there's a lot of teacher input, and teacher reflection, and teacher decision-making in the process of our curriculum development. We're really proud that all our schools and the elementary schools have been part of the Math Studio process. And you can see here, we have students doing many different types of learning activities, and teachers who are observing each other teach, and then reflecting on student learning and teacher practice. We also see a group of teachers up on the top right-hand corner, who are meeting in a professional learning community and looking at student learning and making decisions about intervention groups and enrichment groups.
And this happens to be some photos from the middle school. As you can see, we have teachers in the upper left-hand corner who are from Inca Middle in a professional learning community, that's an eighth grade group. Then we have teachers from Kane Creek in the upper right and the middle, which are using data. They're looking at the data from their school in order for them to make a decision and look at the areas that they need to focus on with their students, again, focusing on student learning. We have notes on the bottom part that are related to ideas, things that the teachers collectively have collaborated to develop for their focus. I debated whether to do this or not, but Marta says it's only two minutes, so we're going to do this. I want you to see actually a professional learning community in action. I have worked in terms of, with the author of a text that is called, that is called "Collaborative Analysis of Student Learning," because we really want to focus our teachers on that, working together to try to determine what the students know, what they don't know, what they know well, what we can do about the situation. So this is just a two-minute video of the professional learning community, the math professional learning community at Inca Middle. You will see other people in the background, they came to observe, the administrators, as well as the ELA professional learning community came to observe to see what the math people were doing.
Last week, and just as a side note, I really liked the fact that we just looked at two targets and made a very quick assessment. And I almost think we could do this twice a week, and serve this once-a-week assessment just a quick, didn't take the whole block. And it was really easy to see, do they have it or not on the target. This student, well, obviously first, I'll let you just look at it, and you just can make observation first.
And if you think about what we did with analysis of student work, when, if you think about what you're doing to begin with, you're not making any judgments. You're just looking at it to see specifically what evidence is there.
Do I need to do that? Or is that a lie? We can talk. So what's there? Come on, Wendy. Well, he has the algorithm.
He has a reciprocal.
No, no. Oh, he didn't, he didn't show it. And also, an attempted modeling, an algorithm that, well, an attempted model of a problem that was not asked. I don't know if that first picture is right, because... They did, it was not labeled. It was not labeled five, six, and one-third. Which is true. It's right, it's right. So I know it's right, but I know that the picture itself is right, but I don't, I don't know if he would know that there are groups in that. You know, the new unit, the new unit, the new unit is going to be six, right? And so you know how you circle every groups of six to figure out how many units are in there? How many groups are in there? I think he's six, though. He's, he's, he's acting a way that... You've got to sum up the first picture.
So we're going to stop there, so we can move on to the EC piece. I'm going to stand over here, so we're not so crowded there. We've been really fortunate in Buckham County that our exceptional children's teachers have always been able to participate in all this professional development and be a part of this. But this year, we started really again looking at our math performance and talking with Maura and Meg, and realized we still were not getting where we needed to be with that. And a lot of it is not as much the kids, but our teachers' understanding and background in math. When folks go get a special ed degree, they're focused on a lot of things about disabilities and compliance and procedural things, and not as much sometimes about curriculum content. So we knew our, our teachers were, just didn't have some of that information. And so we planned to... And so we planned two days of professional development that then grew into three because there was so much to cover that we just couldn't get it all done in two days. And we've, going to have our teachers, Amy Clayton, who's a resource teacher at Fairview, and Shayna Peel.
Shayna Peel.
Peel. She's, her name's changed, her name's, who's at Woodburn, and they're going to talk to you about kind of their experience as participating in this training. We trained over fifty-five teachers for three days. We used resources from the regular ed, special ed resources, and Title I to get this off the ground and to give these, the beginnings of some of the resources that they need to really be able to teach our students with disabilities better in the area of math.
So we had over fifty-five teachers from kindergarten through fifth grade from all elementary and intermediate schools, and we began by looking at the Common Core State Standards and the preface on students with learning challenges. And you can see here two posters that the special education teachers, just two of about a dozen, and you can see two large words there, "student-centered" and "meaningful." And that was what drove the work, the professional development, that we wanted the mathematics to be meaningful and student-centered. So we spent a lot of time deepening math content knowledge for this group of teachers and unpacking the Common Core State Standards from the lens of special education. So do y'all want to share some of the things that?
I think one thing that really impacted me was being able to take this workshop and take it right back in the classroom the next day. When I planned with the teacher, I found out fractions was the next unit. We had just talked about fractions. So I was able to take those things and put them right into place and plan with the teacher and do some fun activities with hands-on learning, not just for the special ed kids, but for all, the whole inclusion class that I work with.
We also talked about the major work at each grade level in the standards, and for our students, when sometimes we need to focus on what is the most important point for our students, that was what I found really meaningful for my students. I could take back the major work at each grade level and how it progressed through the grade levels to find where my students were at and what I needed to work on with them next.
We also know that professional development is only as good as how it is sustained, and so we knew that our teachers needed resources and they needed support to continue the work. So here you can see where they had opportunities to put together materials to take back to the room, and some other materials that they were able to take back to their classrooms with them. Do y'all want to share something about?
I would like to share something about that. I'm a second-year teacher, and so for me, I had questions about what materials did I actually need for my students, what I would do with those materials when I got them. I'm still learning how to use the curriculum, and so we actually got to get some games. We got some math manipulatives, and we played the games. We learned how to play them and how to differentiate for our students. That was very helpful for me.
And I think it also helped me understand why they were doing things the way they were doing, why they're playing certain games, and how it built on activities, and then how it would circle back and pick up things that they had taught before, and it just keeps building on each other.
So just to close on this part, we were really excited about the collaboration between the special education teachers and the regular education teachers, and very thankful to Jana's support for letting us do this work. The sessions were led by myself, my colleague Meg, and three special education teachers. We wanted them in front of their colleagues leading the work as well. So we know that this work is what strengthens mathematical understanding and leads to the kind of work that we saw earlier. So thank you for listening.
Forward world, we'll take just a minute. One thing that I failed to mention at the beginning of the meeting is that, as you probably know, Mr. Churchill is not here tonight. Tomorrow starts the National School War Association Convention in San Diego, California. Tomorrow morning early, they, they have what they call boot camp classes, which are designed for new school war members, and so she wanted to attend those boot camp sessions. And so she left, leave this morning, and is in San Diego, so that's, that's why she is not here today. Also, please, Ms. Baldwin, you're leaving in the morning for the convention also. Okay, Ms. Baldwin, do we have any folks signed up for public comment?
We do, we have Michelle Pace Wood.
Yeah, I'd like to remind everyone that has signed up, and if you would like to sign up, Ms. Wood, you can come on up to the podium.
One question for Chair, I'll leave.
Okay. If, if you have a, if you'd like to make public comment, please come over and sign up so that we have a record of your attendance.
I have a letter for submittal. Should I submit that to Connie?
Ms. Jackson, yes.
I have a copy, one for you and one for every board member.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone that you have three minutes for public comment.
And, and I would ask that, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me speak today. You guys do a great job. I know a lot of you, and you do great work. If you'll refer to the letter that I've submitted, I'm going to kind of try and get through this quickly because I only have three minutes. My name is Michelle Pace Wood. I'm a proud parent of an eighth grader enrolled at Inca Middle. Contrary to popular belief, Inca parents do care. We've been patiently sitting in the back of the line waiting for our five, five-six school to be built, and now we've come to a tipping point and just can't wait any longer, and this is why. House Bill 334, just passed the, the state house, and it passed by the Senate, would give Buckham the ability to use capital fund money designated for building schools for technology debt repayment or training. If Buckham decides to use this money for technology, will there be any more money for the five-six Inca school? Will Buckham be willing to take a loan out for this school? Will, will Inca be last in line again with the same comment of sorry, we're out of money right now? So that's, here's some facts I wanted to bring to you today, and it's a concern we have in the district. Our population there is eleven-hundred, possibly growing to twelve-hundred in two years if there's no more growth in the area. The state is building a new exit to be done in two years right inside the hardened district. One group has told us that Inca Middle is now the most overcrowded middle, middle school west of Charlotte. I'm going to get with Dr. Baldwin and check that fact. Fifth-grade elementary parents are choosing not to attend Inca. Transient worker populations make enrollment numbers go up and down. Students can't open lockers because of crowding during class changes, lunch lines are so long. Kids are buying snacks, so they'll just have a minute to sit down and talk with friends. Teachers are using old closets that are cleaned out, and feeder elementary schools into Inca Middle have just enough room for homerooms, but not any classes for extra classes like AIG. Many children, our limited availability of staff, I'm not talking about teacher, compared to other schools because of the numbers at Inca Middle, and the computer lab is the same size as other schools that serves many less students. There's a lot of other facts here I've asked you to refer to. My daughter is moving on to high school, but I am fighting this because my community needs your help today. We support and appreciate the hard work of our county leaders, this board, the staff, our educators, and especially our principal, Mr. Keever. He's done a great job, a really great job. But why does Inca need a five-sixer right now? There's a crisis there. There's one coming in two years if this problem isn't solved today. We're not asking for more, we're asking for the same. We're asking for the same. One commissioner that we've spoken to said, "We have to wait for the school board to ask for funding." I mean, I'll play ball. I'm here. I don't really agree with that, but I'm here to do that. The Inca District, this, so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to ask you formally, please. The Inca District, a strong working-class community is coming to you, our elected leaders to say, "We need help. We just want the same, the same education as our children."
Ms. Wood, your time is up.
Please send a request for funding today. Thank you.
Lisa Baldwin?
Good evening. I just wanted to mention, I went to a training this morning on rules and procedures for small boards. It was a great learning experience, and I kind of sprung something on my board tonight, and I want to apologize for that because I did ask to amend the agenda to change our board directives to board directives for discussion and possible action. And the focus of that workshop was on how boards, small boards like ours, really need to focus on discussion. And it's not so much about making a motion and seconding it and then having discussion, but maybe having the discussion first, as I mentioned in the board directives for discussion and possible action, and then out of that discussion to come up with a plan of action, a motion to put forward, to direct the administration to look into the feasibility of whatever we're proposing. And that's what I just wanted to bring to the board. I see us moving in this direction. I think this is, you know, what we are actually doing more discussing now, and it's a great, it's a good thing. And we have very intelligent board members, and I like seeing how they're utilizing their talents and thinking creatively, using those problem-solving skills and critical thinking skills, just like we're teaching our children in our twenty-first century schools here in Buckham County. And I want our board to continue on this path and be a great example for our students to debate and honest discussion. Do take us to a higher level of thinking. And tonight, we're going to have several opportunities to discuss some challenging and some exciting issues. And again, I just want to emphasize that discussion piece and how important that is because, you know, we're here, of course, because we want the best for our children and our, we want our students to succeed and excel, and just want us to keep working towards that goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
Alan Henderson?
Hello, my name's Alan Henderson. Come to talk a little bit about the Healthy Youth Act of two thousand and nine. It amended the abstinence-to-marriage law to require teaching of more information on STDs and sexual abuse and assault, and the effectiveness and safety of all FDA-approved methods of STD and pregnancy prevention, and also eliminated the requirement of public hearings before implementing a comprehensive sex education curriculum. My son comes home from school one day, you know, I was under the impression we're still abstinent only, but I guess I don't pay attention enough, but he comes home and says, "Oh, they told us all this stuff, you know, where I can get these, where I can go to get condoms and where I can go to get morning afternoon pill and all this stuff without telling you." And I'm like, you know, so I called the principal and talked to her, and apparently that's a, that is part of the curriculum now, and it's stopped by somebody from, I think, the Health Department. And the biggest problem I had was I didn't know about it. There's an opt-out clause where if he brings me home a paper and I happen to see it, he doesn't lose it, and I, you know, sign it one way or the other, he can, I can get him out of certain portions of, I don't know how much, but certain portions of it I could get him, elect not to have him in for that. But the bill also allows you to adopt a policy of an opt-in, where I have to sign something, and that way I would know what's going on as a parent. You know, obviously, I've got, my daughter's coming up, I'll know now, you know, but he's already had it, so I missed my chance there. So I would ask you guys to really consider doing an opt-in policy, seems more, seems better for the parents, so we know what's going on, you know, and we know what our kids are being taught. I guess the other thing is I would like to, you guys think about a resolution, I guess, to the legislature to take another look at this act, and you know, the whole idea of taking out the public hearings. Seems wrong to me. I don't, you know, I don't know everything about it. You know, what I have here is an overview of the changes that were made. I got a copy for everybody. It's from the National, North Carolina Family Policy Council. Maybe get a copy of that, put it to the minutes, I think we could do that. Let's bring that to you guys.
You'll bring it up to Ms. Jackson. Mr. Henderson, thank you for coming. Mr. Henderson, we'll just check in and, thank you. Ms. Baldwin, anyone else?
That's all.
I'll make sure I try to get, get this straight. But before that, we'll go to our Safe School Task Force presentation.
And again, we're going to ask you to come back down and some of you can lower the screen. Feels good to stretch. Keep it moving tonight. Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. We, I am very pleased to be the one to kind of lead off this tonight and kind of, and to present to you our review of Safe Schools. Early in January, Dr. Baldwin and Sheriff Duncan, who was here earlier, asked a joint task force of folks from the police, from the sheriff's office and from the schools to pull together to, to review our Safe Schools procedures and our policies and to, to make some recommendations. I'd like to recognize, first of all, the folks who served on the task force. Sheriff appointed Kevin Presley, Kevin Presley's in the back there, to be our facilitator and led us through a process that the sheriff's office uses to do problem solving, and it was a very helpful process. Dr. Sherri Baldwin, who was a former employee of Buckham County Schools and, and went on to work for the sheriff's office as a trauma specialist, and Lieutenant Mike Ruby and Corporal Bill Fisher, SRO at Owen High School, and then the folks from Buckham County Schools, Dr. Adele, Mr. Hutt, myself, and not to not recognize Paula Garland, who had our meditaker, our organizer, and disseminator of information was, was essential there. The duties that we were assigned were to look at our existing policies, which were very good. I would say that we, we looked at not only at our plan, but at plans from across the state. Many of them looked very similar to ours, and there's a reason for that. They used ours as a model. Ours is good. And, and what we did, ended up doing with that was just updating some common language that we're using now, some practices that we're using that we didn't use when it was developed several years ago. We also looked at the best practices of other school districts and travel, you know, interviewed people from other, other school districts, visited folks from other school districts, and then we looked at existing resources both within our own school district and with the sheriff's office to, how could we better use those, those things? And then make recommendations. What else do we need to do? Are there things that we need to do that could improve our current plan and our current limitation of our Safe Schools plan? The, the beginning of this process involved looking at numerous community experts. If any of you are in the room, if you are on this list, I know we have a number of SROs, Mr. Beehan from Emergency Services, folks from Department of Health and Human Services are here tonight. Please stand for just a second and be recognized. There's two pages of that. I mean, there are lots of papers on top of it. We, we actually have someone tonight who drove all the way from Cumberland County because the Lieutenant Ruby and Corporal Fisher drove to Fayetteville to look at how they utilize SROs in their elementary schools, and Lieutenant Morgan. We appreciate your being here today. We began by looking at a, a position paper as, as an organizational method for what the work of this team would do. We used a position paper that came out in early January as a response to the tragedy at Sandy Hook. This position paper was written by nine school violence prevention researchers and practitioners. It's been endorsed by over a hundred professional organizations, including the NEA, National Education Association, American Psychological Association, Council for Residential Children, and over a hundred universities and colleges who teach and prepare folks to be educators. These researchers are studying school violence since the nineteen eighties, prepared this statement to communicate scientifically informed practices and make recommendations for practitioners, policymakers, and the general public to try to build consensus for a course of meaningful action. One of the key strategies in here was to avoid a knee-jerk reaction, to simply look at security. at security, but to look at the reasons why there is school violence and why there is violence in the community that carries over into the school setting. So they recommended a balanced approach by looking at school security, educational practices that teach the, the standards of school safety, and additional supports and services that are in place for those students who need social emotional support, mental health support, because those are key in, in prevention. They also stress communication. Communication is critical. We have to be aware of those persons in our community who present troubling behavior and not be afraid to talk to each other about them so that we know about them and are able to react quickly. And when we know about those folks, we have to have a coordinated threat assessment process, which we already have within the school district, we just need to, to connect better across our community. We need to change the culture of our schools and our communities to go away from tattling, which we have often associated as being something wrong, something we're not supposed to do, we're all taught when we were young not to tattle, to reporting, because responsible citizens report. And when the responsible citizens report, we can react and have a, an appropriate response. And we need to use efficient and establish efficient and user-friendly channels of communication so that information gets to the people it needs to get to and, and plans can be made. We also need to look at connectedness. What binds us together is community. We need to, to recognize that there are students in our buildings who feel disconnected from the educational process. And we need to have in place services and supports in place for getting those folks involved, not only with school-related activities, but with community involvement activities and service activities to address that marginalized student, show concern and foster avenues for their, them to be, find a place to do meaningful involvement in the school setting. And last and definitely not least, is those supports that we talked about, those mental health supports, the social supports. We need to teach actively in evidence-based conflict resolution. We need to teach evidence-based bullying prevention. And we need to have in place, as we are already working by review, a three-tiered behavior management system, which is called positive behavior intervention and supports. We have currently 26 schools who are either training or implementing and should have the remainder of those schools trained by 2015.
As Mr. Thompson said, this, this has been a tremendous experience for me, sitting on, on the committee and having the chance to talk with so many people in our community that work in the police department, Woodford Police, Weaverville Police, all of the surrounding police departments, including our own sheriff's department and our emergency management folks. And it's just wonderful partnering with them through this process. While we were doing that, we realized that through our conversations, how important it is to really look at what our stakeholders have to say and what they're feeling in regards to school safety. And we did that two different ways. The first is, we looked at the survey questions that pertain to school safety that was administered in February. Each year, Buckham County Schools actually administer surveys to all parents, students, and teachers in the schools. And we use those, normally use those results to write our, our school improvement plans and to work with our school leadership team to work on things for the next school year. We were able to pull some of those questions that were related to school safety and, and get, get the responses. And as you can see here, we were pleasantly surprised to, to see that students feel safe at school, even though, you know, they, most of them know about the Sandy Hook incident. Our students in Buckham County overwhelmingly indicated that they still feel safe at school. They overwhelmingly indicated that they know who to report issues to. And they, they indicated that they, that they're treated fairly and that school is a safe environment and that there is timely response to concern. So our kids are feeling safe. That doesn't mean that our plan doesn't need a, a look at and some tweaking, but it's good to know that our starting point is that where our kids are actually feeling safe in the schools. And that really goes to the teachers, the teacher assistants, the principals and the assistant principals that are in the school. They're on that firing line, they're right in the trenches with those kids every day. And it's a tall order when you can honestly say that you're making 26,000 kids across Buckham County to feel safe each day. And we know that in order for students to learn, they've got to feel comfortable in their environment. We also decided to go a step further with the information regarding our stakeholders and we did a phone survey. And we came up with six questions that we wanted to send out to the community that dealt with school safety. Question one, and this survey actually was conducted, conducted in March. The question one asked for support for increased counselors and social workers. As you can see, we had 4,000, a little over 4,000 folks to, excuse me, a little, 6,000 folks participated and 78% indicated that it was very important that we look at support for increase in counselors and social workers. Our second question was support for law enforcement, the increase in law enforcement presence in our elementary schools. As you can see, 63.9% of, of the respondents indicated that it was very important, while only 26% said it was somewhat important. Question three, our school buildings have adequate safety features. As you can see, that 60.5% of the respondents indicated that there needs to be some room, some improvement in those areas. And we realized that that may be the case because we do have a number of buildings that are old and, and needed upgrades and need some safety features involved. So we figured that when this question went out, that we would, it would come back and indicate to us that some need is there. And we've been working diligently on that need through capital outlay this year. I've sit on that capital team and we've actually visited a site today to look at reconstructing an entryway so that it provides a school a more safe environment. Question four, support for maintaining schools as gun-free zones. Schools should be gun-free zones. 58.4% of the respondents indicated that they should remain gun-free zones. Schools, question five, schools create climate that encourages respect and discourages bullying? This is an interesting one, with 57.8% of the respondents indicating that the school does a good job, but you, as you can see, 34.0% of the folks said that we could do better. And while 7.7% of the folks said that we could do a lot more. So that's an indicator to us that there's more work that we need to do as a school system in regards to bullying and how we deal with bullying in our schools. And then the final question that we sent was, schools have a timely and adequate response to reports of bullying. And again, you'll see the same trend where 47.1% says that we do a good job, while 40.6 and 12.2% of the folks say that we need to do a better job. So another indicator that our responsibility and the way that we're handling bullying does need to, to be looked at. And as we worked through this process, we looked at four major areas, prevention and mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. At this time, I'm going to begin with the first priority. And as we, as I go through this, each one of the members of the task force will come and present a piece of this particular presentation. And these are just recommendations that we are making to you all from our research and our conversations and the data that's been collected from our community. The first priority are, we recommend that entry systems are at elementary schools, intermediate schools, and the community high school. I am glad to report that the board several weeks ago have approved the installation of entry systems. Those systems are in, in the process of being installed. We met with the contractor two weeks ago and he is in the process of actually going through each of the schools and beginning the installation process. It is our hope that when school starts in August of 2013, that all of our schools, elementary, intermediate, and the community high school will have a, a bus camera system, entry system all in place. Another recommendation is that there, we're asking that a budget be established, a yearly budget for the Safe Schools Office. A budget is needed for several things, but priorities are training opportunities and equipment upgrades. Many of the Safe School training opportunities are not within the state of North Carolina. We would need to send the folks to different states. Mr. Thompson and I was just reading a while ago when they're having a national bullying conference in Las Vegas. Although that'd be nice to go. And normally, the, the National Safe School Conference is held in Orlando, Florida. And I am a big fan of Disney World. So, but we do need to be able to take advantage of those things. As we get further into the presentation, we'll, we'll talk about communication. And that's an equipment piece that, that comes to play where we're going to have to change the communication that Dr. Baldwin and I have so that we can continue our, our communication with the sheriff's office through two-way radios, as well as with EMS. And then we also need to maintain a, a low-band radio so that we can communicate with our own transportation department, as well as our own maintenance department. And those radios are extremely expensive, so everything, I guess nowadays is expensive. So, and then when you're dealing with Safe Schools, as you know, from, from the door bus systems, you know they're very expensive. We're recommending to establish a position to work in the Safe Schools Office and, and we came up with a name as a Safe Schools Field Coordinator. This person will be utilized to assist with training school staffs, attend crisis team meetings, conduct site assessments, and work out, and work with outside agencies on school safety projects. Along with myself as the Director of Safe Schools, the Field Coordinator will be a point of contact to all of our schools with school safety concerns. And the reason for this position is because we have 42 schools. And if we're going to do a comprehensive training program for our cafeteria workers, for our bus drivers, for our custodial staff, for our teaching staff, for our new administrative staff, it is very difficult for one person to do that. It's almost impossible. In addition to going to the crisis team meetings, each school, K-12, are having crisis team meetings once a month. And really, we wouldn't, we would like, from, from the central office perspective, to be at those, to, to share what we know and to listen to what is going on in the different schools, but it's very difficult to do. It's, it's really, Safe Schools has gotten so big that it's, it's too big for one person with the size of our district. Another recommendation is to share communication technologies with other agencies such as the sheriff's office, EMS, which is the Buckham County Management Center, Mission Hospital, Woodford Police Department, Weaverville Police Department, AB Tech Campus Police, the North Carolina Highway Patrol, local fire departments, and Black Mountain Police Department. And again, this recommendation will allow for direct communication with these agencies. We recently got a bid or a price on, on the type of radios that Dr. Baldwin and I would need, and they're over $5,000. And that's just to keep us in contact with, with our local agencies. They're going to a different frequency. The sheriff's department, EMS are all going to a different frequency, a high band, if you will, whereas some of the other departments are going to stay on low band. So there's two different radios that we would have to maintain. To install cameras at all elementary schools, intermediate schools, and add cameras at the middle and high schools. There, we currently do, right now, have security cameras at our high schools, as well as our, our middle schools. Most of the schools are not 100% covered, but what we have determined is that those cameras have become widely used by our administrative teams out there while conducting investigations that threaten school safety. We have a lot of areas that are not covered, just because the number of cameras in a particular school. We need to add cameras in stairwells. Where we don't have cameras in gymnasiums at the high school level, we need to add cameras there. And there are other, outside cameras need to be added as well, facing student parking areas and other areas on campus. So we do know that there is a tremendous need for those cameras. And I als, and we also, as a committee, believe that there is a need for those type of cameras in the elementary schools as well. They are, we are seeing, as, as Mr. Thompson will talk about later, more and more aggressive young people at the elementary school that are jeopardizing school safety on a daily basis. And we need to have those cameras for not only our protection, but for, you know, parents to see what we're seeing and for evidence. We're also recommending that we will help, or telling that we will help facilitate an annual Safe School Assessment Retreat. This retreat will include the school leadership team, law enforcement representatives from other agencies, and the community college. We're going to use this retreat as a annual training session on school safety. It'll be an opportunity for us to bring together key players in school safety in Buckham County so that we can have meaningful conversation. And we'll do this annually. We're also recommending at the school level that their crisis teams initiate home visits. Each, as I said earlier, each of our, our schools have a crisis team in place. And these are the ones that are in the building that have been designated as, as experts or soon-to-be experts in safety. They are also the ones that will know troubled students that are in the building, troubled families that are in the community. And it is, the, the insight potential of visiting with these folks is immeasurable. It's invaluable, going and, and having conversation, providing aid when we can. This is an, an opportunity for us as a school community to be proactive in regards to school violence rather than reactive.
Chairman Reinhart, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joe Hough, Director of Transportation for the county. Right in line with what you saw in the results from the, the public survey, when you noted that they felt like we were doing a good job with bullying, but they said we can always do better. It goes back to, to what Dr. Adele just said about cameras. If we can look at character development, we will definitely do that, but when you have those cameras, he said, she said, is taken away. Certainly, with what Dr. Adele said about more cameras in the schools. Right now, let me give you a status on where we are with, with cameras on buses. And I'll give you a little bit of history, too. What you see in this particular slide is a digital camera. It is the cutting technology. It does a lot of things for us and I'll tell you about that in just a second. But the first cameras that were on buses, if you remember, were the old JDC little handheld hand cords. And it was really rigged just by ingenuity to make it work for buses. It was put on a pedestal, on a fairly weighted pedestal, with a little bit of foam to help knock down the vibration, put in the bulkhead if this is my bus, looking back this way. And then, of course, rigged to be hot-wired to the control or the motherboard panel with a source of energy from the battery. And that was our first attempt. Worked pretty good, most of the time, and then it got better. Some of the vendors that we started working with put a hard box for that VHS tape beside the bus and away we went with vendors and really starting to attack, having good cameras on the buses. After that, went through that spell of, of that product, we were limited with the VHS model because it only gave us so many days of recorded data. And it could very easily have happened long beyond a week or two, two-week time span. So the digital cameras came along and that's where we are now and they work very, very good. To give you a quick status of our 262 buses for Buckham County, we have 10 buses left that we do not have a single camera on. And, and with 262 buses and using capital funds, that takes a little while. So we're very, very close. I would tell you, on average, I get about 25 cameras with each cycle, year in and year out. So obviously, if you do the math on that, I can put, I can cover that 10 at the end of the year and then I've got 15 more. Now what do I want to do with those? I want to start replacing those with VCR because they're, they're just so outdated. I'll tell you, every time we call a school that has an event, the discussion is usually somewhere in that conversation, "Have you checked the camera?" And then our next question is, "Is it digital or is it VCR?" And you can imagine what the reaction is between me and the assistant principal when it's, it's a VCR. So it, we, we, our, our chances of we're going to see what we want to see is certainly reduced if we have to rely on that. So that's where we'll go next with our efforts to get those 72 replaced. When we've got at least one camera per bus, the next thing you want to do, the very last comment you see on that slide... comment you see on that slide, and I'll get back to my table representation of my bus over here, we've got the one hard drive system with one camera looking back towards the back of the bus. Well, I'll ask you the question, where does most of the mischief happen on the bus? The very back. This camera system is built to actually house four camera sets. So once you've got the hard drive, which is the bulk of the expense in, it's just a matter of adding the cameras at a lesser expense, to get what you want, which is four cameras. So we want one in the very back, looking at those back two seats. So I got two more. The other one, and I'll kind of mimic this a little bit for you, if I'm the driver, we could put one over the shoulder of the driver, seeing the driver, and seeing the stairs of the bus. We do have incidents that happen sometimes with that. And I'll reference real quick, the Alabama shooting. You know, you've got all that on camera with that particular camera view. And then, the last one, of course, is a stop-arm camera on the outside of the bus. And I will tell you, those numbers have drastically increased over the past three years. Just got the data from our one-day stop-arm, and last year, we were at sixty-five, one-hundred and eighteen was the number for this year. So it would be very much a very needed thing to make a statement within the community that's not gonna be tolerated. So that's where we are on the recommendations. Like I said, it has a big impact on bullying, but it does a lot of other things for us, The next thing, of course, is a live GPS for the buses. I will kind of let you look at the first line of that. It will enhance cost savings, operational efficiency, and safety, which is the main one that we're all about with this presentation tonight. I had an opportunity last quarter, maybe kind of give you just really quick, three examples of those. The cost savings, there's a keypad on the bus. Right now, the drivers have to go inside to clock in. Would not have to do that anymore. So with that cost savings, obviously, the bus can get off on its route quicker, possibly even pick up students a lot faster than what we're already doing, as far as getting out there, getting out in the communities. The second thing, operational efficiency, one of the things it does there, all the time when you have the phone calls about, "Bus did not stop today," or "It's going too fast through my development." Right now, that AP has to spend time investigating with that bus driver. This gives you immediate feedback. The AP's sitting at the desk, on the phone with that parent, and say, "Do you have just a few minutes? I've got that data right here." They can actually say, "You're right. It did not stop. I will take care of that." Or, "Yes, it did, and it stopped at such and such a time, for so many minutes," or "I'm sorry, seventy seconds." Another thing, some developments having like a twenty mile-per-hour speed limit. Obviously, we get sometimes concerns, community members saying, "It's going way too fast through my development." You can very quickly look at that data and say, "You're exactly right. I see that. We'll take care of it." Or, "Actually, it's only gone about eighteen, and for the past week, I see this has been maintained and speeding." Instant feedback makes the life of those administrators at the school so much easier. And the last one, of course, is safety. Dr. Adele and I worked on the school evacuation plan for alternate sites, evacuation sites. The thing that this would do, obviously, is when you, hopefully, we never have that sort of a situation, but if it ever were to happen, and we're sending buses to evacuate, we know, we can pull on a computer, we know exactly where they are. I can basically say to the Crisis Control Event Leader, if it was Dr. Baldwin, "Dr. Baldwin, those buses going out to such and such a school, or on Church Street, they'll be there in five minutes." That's the kind of instant feedback I can get with live GPS. So we are in a pilot study right now, very young into it. I've got sixty days, we're in day ten. And so I'm looking forward to compiling more feedback that I can provide to the board at a later time. Some other things, I got two more things to share with you, from transportation standpoint, what we can do. We can allow volunteer transportation safety assistance. We do have transportation safety assistance on our special ed buses, as well as some of our alternative program busing. But this would be an opportunity to have volunteers be on those buses at the school's discretion. We can do that through law enforcement officials. And we can also do that through our approved volunteer program with the school system. And that, of course, will be at the frequency of the administration. And the last thing, I'll reference that Alabama shooting again. In that particular situation, the driver didn't know that individual, but it made a lot of people around the nation think, you know, "We have a lot of times where somebody unknown to the driver approaches a school bus." And what we found out is that some states have a ten-to-fifteen-foot standoff distance. Currently, North Carolina does not. But that's not to say we can't go ahead and be aggressive on that policy. Last area for transportation is to look at our safety policies, improve upon them, and then, of course, provide the right training through in-service with our bus drivers. In this particular one, we will go ahead and start learning bus drivers. There's nothing wrong with telling an individual, and it may be even a parent, and you just don't know, and they want to let you know that their child is sick, "Hey, keep an extra eye on them today." Just tell them that parent or that unknown person, ten to fifteen feet away from that door, "Hey, could you stop right there? I can hear you just fine, what you need." And that's something we can get into as a practice, and we'll start doing that in our in-service training. Along with that, a picture is worth a thousand words. When we have training like that, we'll stage a bus outside that in-service, and we'll go out and we'll walk through those. We'll have good training scenarios. So those were the four things from the transportation standpoint.
Thank you. I'm Mike Ruby. This is Will Fisher, the SRO at Owen High School. I'm supervisor of the SRO units, I'm in all the schools all the time, and we're gonna present part of the law enforcement side of this presentation. And let me also echo what some of the school people have said, that the collaboration part of this effort was great, it was a learning experience for us, even though we work in schools every day, we'd be so much more about the mental health aspect, and school counseling and so forth, that we believe that that's equally as important as, you know, as the law enforcement department said here. So we've kind of looked at this as a balanced approach, and hopefully, that we have. So our priorities are our recommendations. And first of all, let me talk to you a little bit about the job description of the School Resource Officer. A lot of times, they're stereotyped. We hear things all the time, say, "Well, I'd like a real police officer to do that." You know, it's not. A School Resource Officer is a real police officer. That's their full-time assignment, is what they do. They are, that's their beat, that's their talent, that they work, is that individual school that they do. And they work extremely close with the school staff, with students, and the whole school community. There are three roles, basically, that they do. First is, of course, is the law enforcement officer. Like I say, they take, they do, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, we do have to make an arrest at school. We do that. We do the functions of a law enforcement officer. We're also, though, an informal counselor. We build relationships with kids in school. You know, we're not counselors like school counselors are, but we're informal, and we build those relationships. And that's one of the most important things that a School Resource Officer does. He tears down those barriers between law enforcement, and we make, and I'll tell you, they make lifelong friends with a lot of these kids in the schools. And also, we're a law-related instructor. We are vatted into health classes, and civics classes, and whatever, and we teach law-related courses. We've got job descriptions on everything, to how to have a safe babysitting organization, to the amendments to the Constitution. And we, and so they're trained, and they go in and have classes periodically, and they make themselves accessible in that matter. The SROs must create and maintain a close relationship with principals. And I've heard Dr. Baldwin say many times that he was a principal, and talking with other principals, and a lot of them are here, a lot of times, the school principal doesn't want to go in their building without that School Resource Officer being there. And that's a good relationship to have. It is. And when they have each other's back, and they're on the same page, working with each other. The SROs must work closely with parents, students, and members of the community, which is, you know, we've already said that. And all of our SROs work within our guiding principles of the Sheriff's Office, which are service, accountability, integrity, professionalism, and dignity. And those are not just words, those in our department, those are indeed our guiding principles. We don't have a big stack of policy procedure manual, although we do have some, where everything that we do is guided by that right there. We're recommending seven additional School Resource Officers. Let me explain that. We've looked at larger departments of what they're doing, smaller departments, as to what they're doing. We've looked all over the country, we've looked through the National Association of School Resource Officer, and see what schools are doing, what they're doing. A lot of school districts all across the country are doing what we're doing right now, is reviewing their policies and doing that. And we want to look at a balanced approach, we want to look at something we could do, and what would be effective. And the way we would deploy those School Resource Officers is that we would put one School Resource Officer assigned to each of the six elementary school districts. So the Irwin District would have an elementary officer as well, that would go to those four, each one would have about four schools, that they would be assigned to elementary schools. And we would also add a School Resource Officer out at the community high school out there. The school, we've not had one there, the Owen District officers have covered that, but now, with the alternative to suspending students are there, I think it's much needed that we have a full-time School Resource Officer there on that campus as well. What that would do, that would enhance response times to elementary schools, it would give us greater visibility in the elementary schools. Those elementary officers would build those positive relationships, like the others do, with the students and the community, and will allow all middle and high school SROs to remain on their campuses much more. So right now, we have a School Resource Officer assigned to every middle school, every high school within our district. But now, they respond to elementary schools within that district. If a principal needs a School Resource Officer, they're on the phone, calling them, they're finishing what they're doing, they're responding to that elementary school, but it's all reactive, we're gonna be active there. This will allow, if we're able to attain this, this will allow us to do a lot of proactive things within those elementary schools, a lot. We can go in there and be on their school safety teams, and be a part of that. We could be on their site assessment teams, have law enforcement part of that, and site assessment teams within the elementary schools. And believe me, if you think building relationships in middle and high schools is important, try going to eat lunch at an elementary school with a police uniform on. You'd build friends immediately, you know? So we think that that would be, if an elementary officer is there, he would cover about the same amount of students, although they'd be in three or four different locations, as a larger high school, because the elementary schools are indeed smaller. So it wouldn't be overwhelming, they'd be proactive, and we think that it would be much needed. And also, the relief factor, if we have a high school situation that's very tense, that we've had one in the public here recently, tensions are high for days after that, that would allow us maybe to pull more of those officers in and double up, have two officers in the high school for a period of time. We've also had, unfortunately, we've had some extended medical leagues, some of our officers have been on extended medical league, and we don't have a relief factor. So you have a large high school, or a middle school, that's left unprotected sometimes for two or three months under that case. And now, we would have an officer to, you know, to work as that. So we're, that's, in a nutshell, what those officers would do, right there. We're also asking that, each high school has an unarmed private security guard that works the main entrance there, and we're asking that additional unarmed security guard at each high school campus. Or if that's not a possibility, at least extend the hours of the ones that are there. That's the first eyes of somebody coming on the campus right there. They all have a radio that they can notify the building, if someone is suspicious, or someone drives by, and they won't stalk a loud and check in. But they do a great job. If you go to North Bunkin High School, or Owen High School, and you drive up there, you're not gonna get through that security guard until he writes your tag number down, and what you're doing there, you know? And that's an important part. So we're looking at that, and we want to at least extend those hours. If you have one, though, like Irwin, or TC Robertson, which has multiple entrances there, we'd like at least, at least part of those to, you know, to look at additional personnel, as far as an unarmed security guard at those locations. Some things that we can do, don't cost money, that we can do within our department and other agencies, is increase officer involvement in our elementary schools throughout our other divisions. One of the things we used to be able to do in the county was that officers would be able to, that have kids in schools, in elementary, they would be able to take them to school on their way to work, in their patrol car, or whatever, and provide a lot of visibility in the mornings to do that. And we were not, now not able to do that, but we're looking, we asked the sheriff to look, the county commissioners and so forth, to look at that again and see, because there's a lot of visibility in the mornings. And I can tell you, that statistics show that armed attacks at a school occur in the mornings, forty-two percent of them since 1992, occur between seven and eleven in the morning. So that's just additional visibility that you would have there. Doesn't cost anything. The next name is the Sheriff's Elementary School Reading Program that we have. We have each week a group of eight, ten, eleven, sometimes, six, seven officers that go to elementary school, different elementary school, and read to K through three grades. And you know what it is? It's building relationships. We're reading, of course, what we're doing in there with those young kids, is building relationships. And one of the things we start, you know, the officer picks a book, whatever he wants to read during that time, but we're looking, working with David Thompson's school to come up with some anti-bullying type books for that age that we would read. Start there with anti-bullying program. And lastly, an adoptive school program, we're looking at the possibility of that, and what that would simply be. In the early nineties, back ninety-one, ninety-two, before we had resource officers in the schools, for a couple of years, we had started what was called an adoptive school program, that would start putting officers in schools and make them visible. I know that my school, back then, it was Valley Springs, and I thought Baldwin was Assistant Principal there at the time, and we were responsible for doing some kind of activity in that school ever so often. So it would allow court officers, patrol deputies, to come in and do some things within the school, and just be visible there, and do the things that the School Resource Officers do as well. So those type of things, we're looking at doing, and putting them in progress. Right now, they don't cost anything, so that's... Turn it over to Will Fisher.
Some of the technology resources that we've looked into is the camera access. All the high school and middle school SROs would have the camera access allowed onto their laptops. So they will be able to pull them up when they need to, in the event of something that's happened, to go back and look on it, or, and see what's going on in your school, if you need to be. With that said, the Sheriff's Office Response Command Post, for an event of emergency, they would allow, they would have that access, to be able to grab the team in, to be able to see what's going on, and being able to assist them in any ways. And then, the third would be the Sheriff's Office Communications Center. That's the hub where we get all of our information from, and that would assist, for instance, if something happened in the middle of the night, someone broke into the school, the communication would be able to pull up that camera, be able to assist the officer where to go, and how to take that. Improving communications, we discussed the incident mapping system, that would go from, if there's a bait close to a school, a radius, if something happened at that place, the school could be notified. And the way they would be notified would be a mass texting. So the principal, and whoever she, he or she allows to have that information, it would go to them. So they would already know, as soon as communication sent that mass texting out, they would know what is going on, and would be able to make the proper calls for what needs to be done there. Third thing is the equipment. Equipment for every SRO would be a handheld metal detector. This would be able, allow them to be able to search if need be, in presence of a weapon or whatnot, in any sporting events, if things need to go that far. Training recommendations for the SROs to incorporate, the SRO Pacific Training into the Sheriff Field Training Officer Program. And this would allow deputies that want to become an SRO to get special training, as far as students. And you can go as far as special news students. And, you know, you learn before you get there how to talk to a student, how to be able to become friends with them. I mean, it's a different world when you go into a high school than it is on the road. All SROs should be critically incident-trained. CIT, I think, right now, currently, there's only one of our SROs that is not, and has already been assigned to the class for the summertime, so they will be all trained for that. We will also do active shooter training, including school personnel. One of the schools, teachers, faculty, staff, to know what's gonna happen. It's gonna be hectic for them all. We want them to realize, hey, when something does happen, this is what's going to happen, this is what the Sheriff's Office, this is what first responders are gonna come in and do, and this is what your role is. So they'll be able to have a better concept of what's gonna happen, and you can read it in a manual, and be able to get a better picture for it. And then, you, sorry, utilize Prime Prevention, I think it was, through environmental design. That will be allowing the Sheriff's Department and the schools to work together in conjunction to become a better, safer school, having fences, knowing where you need to, where your weeks follow your campuses, being able to look and see what you need to work on as a group together.
I will try and do it quickly. You will see, as I start talking, that while I have learned a lot about law enforcement, things I never knew, I've learned a lot about school safety and procedures, but mental health issues are my passion. They're what I've done my whole career. I began teaching students with emotional issues, and they were never those kids, they're my kids. They're the kids I care about. They're the kids that I know that deserve an education like everyone else, and we want to look at what we can do around prevention. When we, when you ask any principal in Bunkin County, what is their major concern in their building, one of the first things they will say to you is that they are seeing an increase in mental health issues and the time...
one of the first things they will say to you is that they are seeing an increase in mental health issues and the time and the energy and the resources that it takes to work with those kids. Not only does it take that time, but it takes time away from those students being able to focus on their academics and achieve and learn. And it also, it impacts discipline. The other thing that we looked at, and this was also in that physician paper that came out from those experts, is that in every mass shooting that happened in schools, there were two keys that could be done, were prevention. One is that there was an ignored presence of severe mental health that has, that had not been addressed adequately. The other was that there was some intense interpersonal conflict that the person, the shooter, could not or did not resolve or tolerate well. Those are the rationale for why we need to look at being very, very focused on the prevention as much as we are focused on the security and the response. We talked a lot about bullying tonight. One of the recommendations would be that we purchase and implement a research-based and bullying curriculum in grades K-8. If we do K-8, we can do maintenance beyond that. Bullying is a national, local issue, it's not something that happens other places, it happens here. If we, if we implement a research-based, evidence-based with measurable outcomes, we can see a reduction in that and improve the safer climates in our school. We would look at teaching replacement behaviors and strategies for the bullying, the, the target of that bullying and for the bystander. Our second recommendation is that we recognize that we don't have, we have limited resources to work with our middle school students within, where we begin to see a lot of social and emotional issues. We have limited resources for an alternative education setting. We began talking with our partners at Western Highlands and some of our school, school volunteers that would become pilots to put in place a, an in-school alternative program that would provide additional mental health supports to students, teachers and parents within those middle schools. We have talked a little bit with Western Highlands on that, to do that service definition. We've tried to look at what would be the target population and we will begin looking at what could be, what could happen at potentially very little or no cost. We are implementing, as I said earlier, positive behavior intervention and supports. We want to integrate that with response to instruction, which is the academic side of PBIS. When we look at that triangle, we know that in primary prevention, that 80% of our kids will do well if we just give them curriculum and teach them what to do and we recognize what they do. But we also know that there is about 15% of the kids in the middle who take, who, who, whose behaviors require a lot more time and attention, who need specialized behavior management systems, who need individual and group counseling, who need extra supports and behavior management techniques. And then we have those five or seven percent of kids at the top who need that wraparound intensive services, working with Juvenile Justice, working with Department of Health and Human Services, working with mental health agencies to pull those services around in order to be effective. So we, we want to look at that by investigating our district coaching resources. This year, we're doing a lot better in, in our implementation of PBIS because they have a person dedicated to do that. We've got to look at our internal resources as well as others to, to, to implement those strategies and put those things in place, as well as develop an implementation schedule for our response to instruction and while we continue partnering that with our PBIS. You saw the slide, you'll hear, you'll hear me talk more about this over and over from time to time. We've got to increase our counselor and social worker positions and supports. Look at the, look at the numbers that we have. The recommendations is one counselor to 250 students. We're currently at 1 to 356 and that varies depending on what level you're talking about. We're pretty well-staffed at middle school. We have some really high numbers at our elementary schools and in some of our high schools. But look at their social worker. We have 1 to 250 as a recommendation and we have one social worker for every 1,342 students. That's a lot. We may never get to the 1 to 250, we may never need to get to 1 to 250. Because the social workers tend to work with the students who are at the higher end of that pyramid and there's not as many of those. So we do need, but we do need to look at some increased supports for those folks so that we can have access for all children to get appropriate interventions. We want to look at a model that exists within our special education department where we have outreach workers who can go in and model the programs and the, the strategies that they developed for improving behavior in the classroom has to be taught to the students in the setting where they're going to use it and it also has to be taught to the teachers and how to use it. So we need to look at that job description, we need to look at can we use non-certified, very well-trained physicians, part-time physicians, volunteers and how do we, and how we look at doing outreach. We want to also look at research-based suicide prevention and intervention strategies. We've had, over the last few years, three or four students who have been, who have died as a result of suicide. And that is tragic for the schools, tragic for their families and has long-lasting effects. But we've had many more who have had suicidal attempts. And even more than that, who come to school and talk about suicidal ideation. We can do a better job with recognizing, preventing, reacting, putting in place supports for these students. And that's with a, a very evidence-based program. Exists within DPI, they have the training, some of our folks are trained. We need to expand that and implement it across the county. Something I'm very proud of that we've done over the last few years is we have crisis recovery teams. We have three teams of counselors and social workers who are specifically trained to go in and provide responses when there is a student death, a staff death, a tragedy that occurs in the school of any kind. And we've, we've had a lot of practice, but they're very, very good at what they do. And support this, they support the staff, they support the principals, they support the students. And the parents have been very, very open and willing to support us in, in those teams coming in. We know that many of the, the mental health issues are triggered by childhood trauma experiences. Childhood trauma can be a lot of different kinds of things. It doesn't have to be, it could vary from child abuse and, and sexual abuse to multiple foster homes, to movement across the country, disruption. We need to look at what are the sources of trauma and share practices, trauma-informed practice across our agencies. I've got our DHHS folks are here because they're, they are already using trauma-informed practices. We need to share that across our agencies and learn how to better use trauma-informed practice to prevent and sustain safety in our schools. Thank you. Dr. Sherry Baldwin will take the hand.
As David said about mental health supports, I'm very excited to talk about our fourth recommendation, which is collaboration. And the results of collaboration would be synergy and savings. And we're going to talk a little bit about the rationale for those because the collaboration is the grease that makes the wheels on the other recommendations go. This is what makes it work. And if we can do these practices, we can implement so many of the recommendations you've heard this evening. Sharing information across agencies allows for more efficient work, for common goals and outcomes for both.